Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled board of selection meeting for Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty four to order. First order of business is pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, public forum. Anyone wish to address their word in public forum? Going once, going twice. Okay, so we need to add one item to the agenda, and that is a request from the first part for additional funding for the outfit to the chief's administrative vehicle. Let's put that in as item six A. Is there a motion? Second. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item three, that would be approved minutes. Three dot one, April twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, special meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion approve.
Second.
Second.
Comments, questions, suggestions, changes? If you're done, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three dot one, the May sixth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Make motion.
Second. Second. Any comments, questions, suggestions, changes?
No, thanks.
There are none. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item four, finance director, Mary Jane. Morning.
Morning.
Vacation.
Yeah, just after vacation. It's over like that.
Thanks for calling.
Oh, you're welcome.
Also on vacation. All right.
Yes. Vacation is a loose term.
Electronic feathers.
Thanks to Zoom.
All right.
Okay, bringing revenues and expenditures today through April thirtieth, eighty-three percent through the year already. Can't believe we've already set our preliminary dates for our audit, so time just flies by. On the revenue side, we are over one hundred percent collected at this time. A number of our departments have already gone over their revenue projections. I will remind you that we do have those extra just under a million dollar revenues in state funding alone. So that will go to the surplus on top of the other revenues that we receive for the year. I do expect revenues alone to be almost one point seven million dollars in surplus. Again, mainly due to those extra grant revenues through the state.
Any questions on the revenue side? Okay.
I'm on the expenditure side. We are eighty-two percent expended overall with the Board of Ed at eighty-three percent through the year, which is exactly where we should be at this point. I don't particularly have anything to bring to your attention. Most of these items we have discussed over the past few months, so I will just entertain questions at this time.
Incumbrances? Are we gonna start working those down or?
Yes, we will start to work those down, not so much this month, but starting in June specifically. Working those down and trying to see which ones we expect to expand at least by August and which ones we don't, and we'll be closing those out as quickly as we can or moving them or making a recommendation to move some of the items to carry it in force for the next year.
Anybody else have requests? Anything with warrants or special funds? Medical?
Okay, medical. Hopefully you're looking at the updated version while I was away on vacation to receive the stop-loss numbers. So that's the area that I had Tracy upload this morning. As you can see, for the month of April, we had another big month in the claim side, one point four million dollars. And the other items relatively flat. Our catastrophic claims had a large bump, large bump from over a million dollars from the prior year, bringing our number up just shy of five hundred thousand dollars, which is about thirty-five percent of stop-loss at this time. We had five additional members hit the total over seventy-five thousand. And three members hit the stop-loss amount of a hundred and fifty, which accounts for that increase. The projected surplus at the moment is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which is relatively minor in comparison to the entire budget. And as I've been expecting, it is decreasing the second half of the year.
The surplus.
The surplus, yeah, the anticipated surplus, yes.
It seems likely that that will disappear if you look at the actual claims. You know, we have May and June in there at the year-to-date average. It's so much lower than the last couple of months.
It could potentially be eight thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars there. We could potentially have a deficit in this fund, which we're able to absorb.
Yes, yes, good thing, yeah.
Anything further? All right. Anything else? Okay.
Nope. You have the resolution. You have the resolution, right?
Next item, item four dot two, discuss to take possible action on the revolution, delegating authority to the first selection finance director to authorize term and additions of bonds, notes, and temporary notes. Annual, it's an annual exercise?
It's, since our bonding was approved at the first referendum, this is just the next step in the process.
Good. Any comments, questions?
We just have the first page here, I think. Is this, is it just signatures after that one?
Oh, this, yeah, this, this is it, yeah.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Comments or questions? If you're done, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Janice.
Morning.
Got a few items for you. Five dot one, discuss to take possible actions for bid number two, and it's two, three, two, four, bulky waste management services. All yours.
Yeah, so we did go out to bid. Currently, Casella is our bulky waste hauler. And the contract was expiring as June thirtieth, so we bid it. And when you look at the bid analysis that was done, it's very close. The bid amount for the actual tipping fee was low on Casella's side, but their transportation costs were quite high. So really had to do the analysis in terms of the number of loads per month and the tonnage to really understand what the true cost to the town would be and to understand which the best value to the town would be for the bid award. So in doing that analysis, which I included, it comes out that country would be the lowest bidder. And we would likely save about twelve thousand dollars a year going with country versus the next low. So it was reviewed by the Waste Transfer Committee. They didn't have a quorum, so they didn't vote, but they were agreeable that this was the lowest bidder. I did talk with the country too, just to make sure, you know, with the change in vendor, making sure they could fit into our operations there. I did check references as well. Didn't seem to be any reason not to award.
How long has Casella been doing?
I believe, well, it's been over six years. I, I, yeah, yeah.
And this is, are they three-year contracts?
Yes, and that's the other thing too. I did want to point out, country did, we had an option for, it's a three-year contract with an option to renew for another three years. And that was the way the last contract was done. And so country was the only one who did bid on renewal as well, which was only a five-dollar increase on both the tonnage rate and the transportation cost.
And country does other towns. It sounds like you were comfortable with them.
Yeah, I reached out to New Haven. They actually do New Haven's hauling for, I believe, their brush and leaf facility. So it's different materials, but they're bringing this material to, you know, an authorized license facility to receive the bulky waste.
I mean, it's, I'm particularly concerned that just Casella, the existing contractor, was so much more than the other two bidding, and I just.
Well, they're located in Willimantic, so that plays a role. They currently are also hauling for our MSW. They're the hauler for Covanta for our MSW contract. They'll continue to haul for Covanta for MSW, but they're coming from Willimantic. And when, particularly with the bulky waste, they would have to come down to Guilford from Willimantic and bring it back to their facility in Willimantic, whereas countries in North Haven.
Reason, I just, I just want to make sure that they weren't trying to send some statement that they got, that there's something going on, that they had to be so much more, but that sounds like a logical thing.
They did reach out to me, you know, just let us know that they're available if something should go wrong. But, you know, I explained to them, you know, we have to go with the best value for the town and.
Well, that kind of might, you know, especially in a truck nowadays, bus.
Yeah, these are hundred-yard trailers that they're pulling.
It's very, very possible that six years ago, that transportation factor was not considered. It doesn't matter at this point. But maybe that's why we ended up here in the first place. It just never made sense.
Right, yeah.
Can you just remind us what this is exactly when you say bulky waste?
Bulky waste is the bins in the back of the transfer station, which takes construction debris, furniture, anything that isn't really trash, like the municipal solid waste, which is more like trash from your bin in your kitchen, you know, your household. This is people cleaning out the basements, people doing construction projects and having debris left over that gets brought. It does not include any wood products. Those go to the transfer station.
Wood products being yard waste?
Yard waste, yes.
Construction wood goes in those big bins at the top? Okay, cool.
I think what's important to understand here is there's a significant increase in the total cost. We have been largely immune from the increases many of our neighbors and other municipalities around the state have been facing related to solid waste disposal. So there, this is a statewide issue, statewide issue. Currently, a lot of solid waste is being shipped to Pennsylvania and points even west of that. So particularly with the closure of the era plant up in Hartford, we're fortunate we're over at Willimantic, but the price increases are gonna come on that side eventually.
Yeah, yeah, we've been immune for the past few years because of our longer-term contracts that we had in place. But we're gonna start seeing, this is the beginning of a trend of increased costs for solid waste.
Gets paid by people driving in, getting on the scale, pumping, getting back on the scale. So the expense is paid by user fees essentially.
Yes.
Will the user fee have to change because?
It may have to change, yeah. We're doing a few other things that we'll be coming back to regarding municipal solid waste. We had talked about unit-based pricing at the transfer station, charging by the bag instead of the pound. This is, this is charged by the hundred pound or ton right now at the transfer station. We're charging about, I believe it's one eighty a ton for bulky waste and trash. They're the same pricing. There may be a need to, there's probably gonna be a need to change the pricing and maybe differentiate it, especially if we go to the, to a bag, unit-based pricing system with the trash. The transfer station committee is working on that right now and will likely have something brought to this board in the near future.
Speaking of the committee, do you have a full complement of the committee or we?
We're still shy, one person from Madison.
All right, is there any motion?
One more question.
Sure.
On the analysis of number of loads, that's the number of loads effectively per month at that point?
Right, yes. You could see it varies from ten to seventeen loads per month in the timeframe I looked at. I basically looked at this past fiscal year to see what the difference in costs would be and to analyze the bid pricing. And that just depends on who comes in the, you know, to dispose of. And then also the ability to compact the material. Our staff at the transfer station uses the backhoe to compact the material into the load to try and maximize the weight of each load because there is obviously a loss for load.
Anything further? Is there a motion to award the bid to Country Disposal Services?
Somewhat.
Second. Any further comments or questions?
We need it.
You got it. Gotta go somewhere. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item two, four dot, five dot two, award of Clifford Hill Road Engineering Services for RFQ number one dash two, three, two, four. Janice?
Right, so I have a quick update on the letter from Cardinal. So let me just back up. We had gone out to bid or to RFQ, RFP for this project after the budget process. We received a letter from the state stating that we needed to begin engineering services and design to address the poor condition of the bridge. I was hoping we were gonna have more time on this bridge, but it's gotten to a point where there's too much material. The mortar is coming out of the abutments for the stones. There's stones missing. So it's at a, you know, a critical juncture that we get moving on it. So I have yet to talk with Mary Jane about the funding source for all this, but I have a few ideas, so we'll work through that. So we, so I immediately put out the RFQ, RFP. We did a process where we first received five responses to the RFQ. Myself and Michael reviewed them. We narrowed it down to three firms who we felt seemed to have met what we were looking for most. You know, in all five are engineering firms that have some experience, some more than others. So we picked them, the three that had the most experience with bridge work. We then interviewed three firms and then we sent out a proposal, request to all those three firms only. And then we received responses to those, to those bids. Cardinal came in with, the pricing I sent you in the letter was wrong. They had some math errors. So it's, it's two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars altogether. I had reached out to them because they had excluded a few things from their proposal, which I felt were necessary for the project. So making sure we're comparing apples to apples as best we can with, you know, professional services. I wanted to give them the opportunity to provide us with costs for some of the items they had excluded in their proposal. And so that's in the letter that they sent to us on Friday. Their math was a little wrong, so they sent me an updated letter that I didn't get to you by the end of the day, which brings their total to two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. SLR was the next firm. They were at, when you take into consideration not just the bid amount, but the direct costs and other items that they put in their proposal that would need to likely be done to complete the project, they came in at just under three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And Luke's Engineering, same thing, when you looked at their entire proposal, derived costs and other items, they came in at just under four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So Cardinal was certainly the best value for the town and certainly experienced. They have quite extensive experience throughout the state doing bridge projects. So, so, you know, my recommendation would be that we go with Cardinal and I'll work with Mary Jane to find that funding source. And I did write it so that we could potentially just issue a PO for the first phase of the project and then, you know, phase it out in terms of how we're paying for it.
So without having this report, we don't really have a feel what the entire project will part.
No, and that's, so another reason for my rush to get an engineering firm on board is, is the funding sources. So we have two options. We have the state local bridge funding source, which their deadline for applications is the end of May. So that's why I was trying to get somebody on board to help us with that application. There's also, in my opinion, a better funding source, which is Lotzip. And either one of those funding sources, I need to have a number and to find out viability. They're gonna work with us to get us that number and then we'll make the decision on what's the better funding source and what's likely to be funded. Right now, the state local bridge program is, they're not funding every project that applies and they only provide a fifty percent coverage of cost. Whereas Lotzip provides a hundred percent construction cost. We have to pay just for the design and engineering services, leaning towards Lotzip for obvious reasons. And since our region has an excess of funding in the coffers, we might have a good opportunity. But I just don't know what that number is for this bridge. This bridge is a, it's quite, quite a large bridge actually, and the span of it is probably gonna increase because of, it's kind of constricting the river, so that'll, you know, discover through engineering analysis. The other challenging issue with this bridge is that the detour route is not acceptable. So we're gonna have to figure out a way to stage construction here, which when you stage construction, or maybe there's an opportunity to do like, you know, accelerated construction, where maybe there's a very short closure time period, that's something we can live with, with the fire department. We'll have to see, but it's, it's gonna be a bit of a challenging one because the detour, there's no good detour. And, and it's, it's a heavily used road. We have over about three thousand vehicles per day use this roadway.
It's kind of a connector road.
It, see, the, yes. It is a connector road and it is. Yeah, and so that's, so because of its functional classification as a collector road, it doesn't qualify for federal local bridge funding. So it's kind of weird the way they, they distinguish collector roads not being eligible for federal local bridge funding, only state local bridge funding. So in that program, it's an eighty-twenty split, which would have been nice. That's what we did on Small Mill Road, but that's considered just a local road, so it qualified for federal local bridge. So it's been a bit of a, you know, trying to figure out the funding. And then the other issue is we have LoSiP funding that we still have available to allocate, but we can't use LoSiP funds with a Lotzip project. It's just been a puzzle trying to put it all together. But the good thing is I think we got a really good proposal. Yeah, it's not at the town line, otherwise we might be able to. But they do use that road because, because of Exit Sixty not being a full interchange, yeah.
Janice and I continue to beat the drum on Exit Sixty with DOT every chance we get, every opportunity we get. Okay, anything further? Janice, you had requested two ninety-five, five as opposed to the?
It's gonna be the two ninety-four.
Two ninety-four.
I confirmed that with them on Friday afternoon, yeah.
All right, is there a motion to approve? Save me a couple of words. Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. All right, Janice, reviewing recommendations, consider services provided to certain B two private roads and consisting consistency with road classification. It's, this has been an effort. It's been underway for a little while. I think Michael did a lot of the work in addition to the team relative to looking at our road classifications. So we're gonna hand it over to the team. Dave, Dave's part of that.
Thank you.
We have a couple of handouts that we realized, first one missed being sent out and the other one we thought might be a little helpful in understanding some of what we're trying to talk about here. And we don't expect that you're gonna make all decisions today. So I broke up the first one to be what I thought was pretty straightforward and easy, which is the B two private roads that are already identified as B two private roads from the nineteen sixty-one classification that was done en masse throughout town for roadways. And for some reason, over time, these B two private roads have been receiving plowing services, even though in our, our classification description, they are not to be receiving plowing. So that list is on the like letter that we dated May twentieth for you. And I kept it as a separate item because it's definitely, I believe, an action that can be taken by the Board of Selectment alone because it is in keeping with the, the original classification of these roads and the definition of what a B two road is. And so this will help, how many miles?
So this is approximately four miles of roads that were plowing when they should be.
And it's difficult plowing.
Yeah, most of these roads are very narrow roads.
Yeah, they're narrow roads. They're not built to town standards in any shape or form. Usually have to send a, you know, a smaller truck specifically for these roads. So, you know, it would be our recommendation to, you know, now, we're still early in the season to, you know, notify these folks that, look, you've been receiving plowing, you know, you shouldn't have been. So you're gonna need to find a way to get your roads plowed, similar to other private roads in town, which we have well over a hundred private roads in town already.
Being so private.
Right, right.
And what was it that made these particular ones fall into this sort of gray market service that they were killing?
Who knows?
Predates everybody in the room.
But is it, is it number of homes or some?
Yeah, that's my next question. How many houses typically are affected?
It varies, I think. You know, there's definitely gonna be a number, but.
I'll tell you what, I'm just gonna, I'll tell you, should I finish? What matters to me is, I mean, if you're dissipating the expense over ten houses, it's a lot easier for folks to say, okay, fine, time to just get together.
Yeah, four miles doesn't sound a lot, but you've got a hundred houses on there.
Well, it's expected four miles spread out over how many different road stops?
These roads, yes. These roads that are on the list that was, it was sent out in your package.
Oh, it's right here, yeah, gotcha.
These are the specific roads and these make up about four miles in and of themselves. And you could see the lengths on some of them, you know, there's, you know.
I suppose the flip side of that is if there's only three houses and it's a short stub of road, then it's a short expense. Interesting.
Or the opposite.
Or if they had somebody to come and do a tiny little thing, it's gonna be expensive.
Have you had any communication with the business before?
No.
Have we had any feedback from these folks for the years on Harley?
Yes, feedback. So I drove, I drive these roads sometimes to look at them. We're not allowed to trim them. We're not allowed to do anything on them. So when we go down there, we're ripping mirrors off the trucks. It's twelve hundred dollars in the time. The residents will come out and say, get off my road. But when it snows, everybody on the road is a doctor. I need you to paw this road right now. So it's like, we can't go down there to do anything to actually get through it safely. And what it's doing is it's chewing up a lot of time for these small trucks on these roads.
Yeah, I remember. A couple of big stories were, we had actually bring equipment out to a couple of them because the piles got too big.
Right, and then mostly these roads, there's nowhere for the truck to turn around, so we're turning around on private property to get out of that road.
We're pushing snow on.
So they may not enjoy it, but they shouldn't be shocked.
No, they're, you know, these roads have been classified since nineteen sixty-one.
I just don't want to get in the situation of, because we've been doing it for so many years, you know, the, some people might feel entitled to continue, number one. And number two, expect us to approve the roads to bring them up to standards that would require.
No, we, we, we don't have, so, you know, based on our ordinance, there's a requirement in order for a road to be accepted as a town road. It has to be to our standards. It has to have a fifty-foot right-of-way at a minimum.
Right, and I just don't want the town to be responsible for bringing them up.
Well, no, we wouldn't be because, I mean, you have to remember, there's other private roads in town as well that don't get the services either. Those, so the difference that I can tell from the way roads have kind of evolved in town is these roads existed in nineteen sixty-one in some form or another. A lot of these roads don't even have a defined right-of-way. They're. A lot of these roads don't even have a defined right of way, they're like, you know, they're they're like.
Glowed by driveways.
Yeah, they're they're driveways over each other's properties, of which each other has rights to pass or easements potentially. The town did allow for a number of years after nineteen sixty one, it's subdivision roads to be created. Those roads were knowingly approved by planning and zoning to not have a distinct right of way. And to serve many homes, some of which are thousands of feet long roads with multiple homes on them. I live on one, I there's eight homes on my road. And those roads were knowingly built as private roads without right of way or anything. But also noted that they would not receive any town services on them. So, you know, I get calls all the time from folks on even those types of roads, like, I want my road to be a town road. I think I just copied you on an email from Carriage Hill Drive section that's private. That these this is the way the development was approved. I think like for our benefit. There was a change in the late nineties by this board, as well as the planning and zoning subdivision regulations. That no longer allows so many homes to be built on a private shared driveway. The max number is three now. Because of access problems, I mean, we some of these roads go for thousands of feet. Very narrow, windy, bad, you know, kind of alignment for both. Emergency service access and, you know, any other type of access to these homes. So now we have the limit of length, as well as number of homes that can be shared on a private road. These roads existed before nineteen sixty one. And likely without benefit of subdivision approval through our planning and zoning commission. But they just kind of were, you know, developments that happened. But they were classified in nineteen sixty one as being private. As B two privates, and therefore really should be in the same category with the rest of the B two private roads and not receive plowing services.
What's the communication plan?
The communication plan would be to to basically send this letter out to these folks to remind them that, you know, they've been receiving the service. But they're no longer gonna be receiving it and to. You know, to get get together, we'll send it to every resident on on each street. And and then I'm sure we'll hear from a few.
But you don't have a feel for how many that total might be?
I I don't think we did an analysis on the number of homes, we can get that for you if that's something.
I guess what I'm doing is it makes sense to send everybody things, say, look, on this date, we're gonna have an opportunity to just to get it all out of the way at once, or does that make it worse? You know, schedule a meeting with everybody. This is what's happening, this is where you can be heard, if you want to be heard.
Well, let's see what the reactions are, let it, I mean, if we if you're finding that. It's necessary to have another meeting, you know, after the letter notifies everybody.
Well, the question is, is the meeting gonna inform our decision? Is it gonna change our decision?
No, but what you do is you give people an opportunity, it's a safety valve. Give people an opportunity to hear it directly and why. As opposed to receiving twenty eight different phone calls.
Well, we, you know, I handle these types of calls all the time. From people on various, you know, types of roads, including the private roads that aren't B two privates, but the subdivision roads I just explained to you. You know, it's a matter of this is this is the list, this is what we're supposed to be adhering to. For whatever reason, over time, it wasn't being adhered to, they were added into the plow routes, I I, you know.
I I I think we should just do it. I mean, I think the key word is remind. These people are probably well aware that they're getting a service they're not entitled to, they're probably nudging each other every time they see the plow, struggling up, breaking the mirrors, you know.
So we don't think we need a meeting, we're gonna have one anyway, after after the fact.
Or there's some outlaws or something as a communication courtesy or something, but I think.
One of the things that I've always been confused about is the rationale that sometimes has been used for us doing plowing, this is for emergency vehicle access.
Yeah, no, it's. So I use that on my road when I. And I was assured, well, I mean, first of all, the the fire department has a plow truck. They 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 get themselves in. And they also can communicate with public works when they need assistance to get into any emergency, whether it's snow or otherwise. So they'll get in for an emergency. And and I'm sure police, it's the same thing, there's the ability to communicate with the other agencies for any access needs. Again, just just a reminder, I mean, there's there's a lot more roads that we don't plow besides just this list.
Yeah, I just returned, plus, we've been doing these. To Susan's point, there's a group of people that might be thinking that they're grandfathered in or something, and that's why we have to be clear.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I'm I'm sure we'll hear from, you know, most of these roads and have some. People who aren't very happy about it, but the the reality is, we we say no to others and, you know, why are.
Why do they get it?
It's just it's just trying, we're trying to clean things up, because it just seems like the last time this was really visited was nineteen sixty one. And, you know, here we are, how many years later, almost. Yeah, it's almost sixty years that hasn't been dealt with. So and it's just been a spreadsheet maintained by the engineering department. How things have changed, whether there are mistakes made on that sheet or what. So that's why we went back to the nineteen sixty one, you know, which was filed in the land records to really. Know where things stand, and I'll admit, when we get into our next discussion, that some of it doesn't make sense. But it is, it's it's kind of the rule that we have to follow.
They really have two alternatives, they could get together, upgrade the road to a like town standards and petition to have it accepted. That's an option, theory.
Likely not to happen, but.
Plus, everybody would have to give up space on their respective.
Yeah, yes.
Or they just get together like everybody else.
They lose the enjoyment of their private road status.
I mean, listen, if that's an advantage, then they're well, they're entitled to paperwork. I don't know, it's a problem, just a matter of fending off the the buzz law that's coming back.
You'll be on the phones that day.
It's it's coming.
I think making my point, but.
Yeah, no, I I, you know, it's in fairness to all of the taxpayers. That's what we're responsible for, everybody in town has that.
Yeah, it's a benefit, it's a benefit afforded to some, not all, and that's that's the underlying rationale, right? One last question, the other excuse is school buses being able to get into some of these locations.
Likely not happening on many of these. There may be some that get service either by the mail carriers or the school buses. But a lot of times, they don't, you know, they'll look at end of the road pickup or something like that. We are talking internally too about going around and actually identifying a little bit of private roads in town, because it's helpful. For the residents who live there, but it's also helpful to the general public to know that, hey, that was a little private, you know. And adding private to the top of the street sign is is one of the efforts we've been talking about doing to better understand. Many roads have their mailboxes at the end of the road, if it's a private road, because they don't get mail delivery down there, the school bus can't make it down. I believe if the school bus can safely make it down and turn around, they will even provide bus service on private roads if 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 they can. But I know, like, I tried that on my road and they just didn't make the turn, so they said, sorry, we can't do it. So, you know, that's that's up to each of those agencies to determine services.
All right, sounds like we've landed on the consensus here. Is there a motion to reclassify the list of roads that have been identified by the town engineer? And send out notification to the appropriate homeowners?
Are we reclassifying?
The statement of re we're reclassifying.
Reclassifying.
We are enforcing the classification.
Right.
There we go. Want to start that one again?
Yeah.
Thanks, sorry.
All right, is there a motion to notify? The residents on the streets that are listed, the documentation provided to us by the engineering department?
Hey, Matt, Matt, it's Pete Barrett.
Yeah, Pete.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. But I I'm listening to the conversation and. And I had a question, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Pete, go ahead.
So. If if these had been accepted. I this is for Janice, really, I I haven't done a lot of research on it. But if these had been accepted, they'd be in a different classification, Janice?
Right, they were classified in the nineteen sixty one reclassification as B two private roads.
Okay.
And they existed prior to, I believe, zoning, the ability for roads to be. You know, subdivision roads through that formal process, they were pre that process. But in place at the time, the roads were classified in nineteen sixty one.
Well, because the reason I ask is, and I need to do a little more research on it, there is a thing called acceptance by implication. And, you know, sometimes plowing and maintenance. Might be enough to constitute an acceptance by implication, so. You know, usually that comes up during litigation, and maybe it's just something that. You you know, you you folks wait and see if it's raised, but I also could do a little research and let you know what. Constitutes acceptance by implication before you go ahead and reclassify, so that you could take, at least take that into account.
We're not reclassifying these, these are already classified as B two private. I actually had an experience in in Bramford where I. I was actually in in a court case regarding a a road that the town considered. A town road, and we lost lost the case because. Even though we put sewers in it, we plowed it, we paved it, we did all sorts of things to this road. That case was lost because the owner bought the feet of the road and was able to make the claim that it was private.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, that was the that was the one in Pine Orchard. So that kind of threw all the case law into a tizzy on what like what you were talking about in terms of. You know, I think it's pretty well documented that in nineteen sixty one, these these roads are on the list as B two privates. We don't do anything other than plow on these roads, we don't make any repairs or maintenance on these roads. Unlike the B one minimum maintenance roads, which are different classification of roads. But happy happy to discuss further.
All right, I'm sorry, I thought you said these were being plowed.
They are being plowed, that's it, there's no other maintenance provided on the roads.
Okay. All right.
Pete, you have a significant enough concern on this this phrase, acceptance by implication. That you think we may have exposure, legal exposure?
Well, I, you know, and I don't want to get too far in the public session without having done all the research on it. But, you know, it'd be something to consider, so the the classification, what we do is classification, what might be. Considered acceptance by implication are are two different things. I I do like the fact that basically we are have them classified correctly. And, you know. What plowing does or doesn't do to affect that is another issue. Yeah, I I'd like to do, you know, a very brief memo on that, so that we should have that.
I I personally think that, you know. What Pete's talking about is just the type of thing that we're trying to clean up. My my reaction is, let's do what's right, what all all the other roads are are subject to. And if it comes down to a court discussion, I mean, let's do what, get everything, everybody on the same page. You know, if you had, if you use that argument, then we're gonna end up doing all the rules.
I I think this is the goal, and it's a great process to get started. Are any of these, I said something, are any of these labeled by the folks who are there as private roads? Do they have signs up?
Some of them.
Some of them, yeah, and and some of them.
That highlights the point that it's an advantage to them to have that designation, they're happy to take, grab that designation.
Right, and I know there's a couple on here that I received calls about other issues, and they all understand that they're private. Private roads, so. Probably some some more so than others, but certainly some of them understand that.
So maybe I jumped the gun on this, what what's the actual motion that I probably should have waited for the motion?
Just phrasing that that we were going to alert the, this is not being sent in a motion, but the idea is that we are gonna notify. The affected residents that effective July one, twenty twenty four, the town will no longer provide any road maintenance services to the to the to the roads.
Or plowing, yeah.
Or plowing, right, including snow plowing. We already don't provide repair, et cetera, that's already a a foundational understanding, right? So Pete, I I just want, if you're cautioning us here, I want I want I want to hear that. Would it make sense for us to send out a letter to these notifying our intent to curtail those services? Pending Pete's analysis?
Well, you know, based upon the step you're taking is really just notifying them that here's how they're classified, and here here's what it means. And we're going to. Run with that from now on, that, so I I think. This may this may bring it to a head on some on some roads. So as far as just notifying the people on those roads. You know, that's, I I don't see a problem with that, actually.
Has Pete seen this letter?
Yeah, he was copied on.
I'm wondering what we're voting on, why we're why we're voting on this. You're not asking us to either.
It's basically change of policy.
Well, it's, yeah, we.
Practice for the policy.
A lot of times, we either myself or or the public works advises the public as to what we, you know, are responsible for or not responsible on roads without your involvement. But we felt that if we're gonna stop doing something that has been, as far as long as we've been here, being done. It should really come from the board of selectmen who, you know, have the authority over roads and. You know, we're not gonna just do it without your approval, we felt that.
Because it's gonna create, it's gonna create some questions.
Yeah, we want to make sure there was some vetting of the decision, at least at your level. And then the next thing, agenda item may be something that requires town meeting, so, you know, like, so there's different levels of. You know, I I feel confident responding to people who live on a private road, and I understand how it became a private road and explaining to them why they don't get services. Without involving you folks, but since it was not following, they are already approved. You know, classification for the road, we don't know how it came to be. We wanted, and we're gonna notify these folks en masse that we should bring it to your attention and get your approval to do so.
And I have no problem voting on it, I just wanted to maybe provide some flexibility for how to handle this question.
And I would be.
Yeah, I'm done.
I I would be interested to know which of this are private, had signs, I'd be interested to know that, if it's not too much trouble to to kind of get the back to us on that. I mean, I'm ready to do this, we're notifying people.
So we currently don't have an inventory of which private roads have private signs.
Right.
So I'd have to do a little further research to figure out which ones, but.
That'd be helpful.
I think in the future, you had talked about taking all of the private roads, getting signs.
Correct, yep.
Label them private, so that the world knows.
We're working on that now, forty dollars a sign.
Clarifies everybody's responsibilities and rights and obligations. They know what they're getting, we know what we have to do.
All right, so should the motion read something like, we are, the motion is to authorize the engineering department to notify. The affected property owners that we will be enforcing the. The current. Class served classification and services provided on their road. So I think that's.
I'd second that, or make that motion if you want.
Go ahead, and then the second.
Well, the only. I'll second it, okay, my my only comment might be. You know, we're signaling out these roads, bottom line is, we're simply treating all roads the same.
All similarly classified roads.
That's my point, yeah, so I mean, okay, it affects these guys, but, you know, the bottom line is, we're not changing anything, reclassifying anything, we're just simply gonna treat everybody the same.
That's right.
Okay, let me try your minds, you have a motion, try your minds, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Next up here.
It's just the more complicated. Thought that was complicated. So we thought that was complicated. And, and I think there might be a couple things you might feel comfortable doing and then the rest of it, I think is, you know, I've already started the conversation with Matt previously and, and Peter. Um, but we wanted to kind of get the ball rolling on this, because we've been working on it for a while and trying to really finish the cleanup of the lists of roads, rectifying it to either the nineteen sixty-one list or we're also suggesting some changes to that list, which I understand would need, as I, as I understand, would need a town meeting approach, okay, so. We gave on, on this little packet, um, there's this, but the second page is a summary of changes, I think the, the first ones I wanted to kind of address was the A two roads and renaming them, okay? And, um, looking for Pete's advice here, but it's my understanding, I believe that just the board of selectmen can do a renaming, um, we have a Bearhouse Hill Road, um, which has caused problems because of, um, there being a Bearhouse Hill Road east on, off of Podunk, no, yeah, Podunk, whereas, um, Bearhouse Hill Road, this is a section off of Goose Lane. Um, and it, the only houses on that street actually have a Foots Bridge Road address, so.
Just one house, yeah.
And it's just one house, um, so, um, there's been some confusion for this, uh, resident who lives on what we call Bearhouse Hill Road and has a Foots Bridge Road, um, address. Michael did some research on it and, you know, based on his research and their request and talking with the police department, who, the chief had come to me a number of months ago about this issue, to see if we could just rename it once and for all, so it's, um, an easy find uh, for folks looking for this address, um, so Bearhouse Hill Road renamed to Foots Bridge Road, and this is a small section of roadway from Goose Lane to, um, the, uh, East River, basically. And then beyond that, uh, is, um, the East River Preserve property that is, you know, dedicated open space. And then, uh, the other one is, uh, Center Ave.
Motion on each one, are we just gonna do it all together?
Do it all together.
Yeah, maybe we have a big discussion and then we weed out what we're gonna actually be able to do here.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, as you say.
Yeah, so then the other, the other one under A two is Center Avenue East. Uh, for some reason it was seven, Center Avenue East, but it's really, um, Center Avenue, um, it's currently signed as Center Avenue, um, Michael, do you have anything to add on that one?
Yeah, so that was just, um, just a formality in our records, we had, that road is listed as Center Avenue East, um, but, um, it currently signed as Center Avenue, so we're just proposing renaming it, um, just for our records, just Center Avenue to reflect it, existing name.
And then above, under A one town roads, we have Church Road number two, which we're suggesting be renamed to just Church Road.
I could explain the churches, so, uh, in our records, uh, Church Road, in our records is actually, it's the current Lanchill Road. Uh, so we're proposing removing that from the list, and then Church Road number two, uh, with, that's the currently signed Church Road, so we're proposing renaming Church Road number two to Church Road. Um, that's just, it's just in our records, was, was all confusing, so.
People who are on that road.
There are no, actually no addresses of that road, yeah, it's a small section.
It's a little cut through road from, uh, Long Hill Road to County Road.
I see, okay. And so no one on that road has to change an address?
Right.
Are there, are there some here that folks are gonna have to change an address?
Yeah, so there's just that one with the Bearhouse Hill.
That one house on Bearhouse.
But they're already using that address as, uh.
Yeah, so we're not affecting anyone.
They're not gonna have to call their magazine subscriptions.
Yeah, any of that, yeah, that, none of these renaming's affect addresses.
Could it be these where there are no, no homes there, but there's property and somebody might be affected by something like that?
No, I mean, this would be, you know, the record to show the change. Um, but we were not aware of anyone using any addresses on any of these roads that are being changed, the names or verified. So those are the only renaming.
Can we tease that apart a little bit, just, maybe you're having the same thought, so presumably somebody, somebody has property adjacent to these sections of road, right, but they have another address off of another road?
Right.
Is that typically what's happening?
Church Road's a fairly short section of road, so I believe all of the adjacent properties actually have either Long Hill Road or County Road.
Okay.
Addresses, so. And there's also the, the parcels are, adjacent to it are fairly large too, so.
Okay.
They front other roads.
All right.
All right, and then, um, going through the list from, starting, so I think those were the, some of the easier ones, I think these additions are as well, the, the.
Do we wanna take that and then put a motion now?
Before we forget it. Are they, is there a different nature of what you're doing from this point forward?
Yeah.
Then, then go ahead.
Does that make sense, is your motion to, to approve those changes? Charles, you have second amendment?
I memorized less, whatever, you know, we could talk about to this point.
I set forth a genesis spreadsheet.
Bearhouse Hill, Bearhouse Hill, Center Avenue East, Church, and Church Road number two.
I'm gonna state. Are being renamed, and that's the only change.
Right, so I'm gonna accept the recommendation from the, uh, engineering department on those four.
That's my motion.
You have your second.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your mind, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously, okay.
All right, so, um, there's a few roads, um, that we found were never, um, added to our accepted roads list, um, we have Apple Tree Lane, uh, was never formally accepted, um, it, the sheet I handed out to you today, has the special cases on the top, um, gives a little more of an explanation on Apple Tree Lane. We do maintain it, um, but it just was never brought to the board for acceptance, so our recommendation is it be accepted. It's right off of Long Hill Road and it serves the.
And it's up to speed as far as all the requirements for public road here.
Yeah.
Got built, but didn't get recorded.
Yep. Um, and then, uh, same, same as Carriage Hill Drive, uh, this is a section of road that is, uh, was built to town road standards, it was part of a subdivision approval. Um, it's a very short road, um, but our records show that there was no acceptance date on file. There were issues with it, um, I guess being finished by the developer, because there was a bond called in nineteen ninety-nine to complete the work and pave the roadway. Um, but, uh, there was no as-built on file, but we're maintaining it, it's a town, you know, it's a town road, um, so we would.
The line was pulled, the road was finished.
Right.
Okay.
Um, down to, um, Duck Hole Road. Um, that one again was, for some reason, never formally accepted, goes to.
Our next one is clearly.
No, I'm going back to this main list here. I'm just doing the ads right now, okay, on this main list, um, Duck Hole Road, um, we, we don't have any record of it ever formally being accepted. That's off of, um, Claver Hill Road.
So that one, it was actually, um, listed in our A two road list, but it's maintained as an A one. So it was never formally accepted as an A one road, um.
That's why, when all the construction were completed.
So it's a, it's a, it's a road that's been around for a long time, so it's, um, A two's, it, it's, um, was upgraded at some point since nineteen sixty-one, uh, essentially just being paved, um, so we maintain it as an A one road.
So it's more of an, uh, reclassifications type of thing, because it was, the town went ahead and improved it, but never upgraded it to the A one status from, from it being an A two status. Um, Greenwood Lane, again, that was never formally accepted, it's explained again back on your special cases list. Where there's, uh, no acceptance on file, again, this was another one where it was a subdivision road, the bond was called to complete the work. And, um, then it was just never followed up paperwork-wise to accept it and move on. Uh, Lake Drive, so, I mean, not sure if we might need to technically include this, but it was included on the nineteen sixty-one list, but it was somehow missing from the two thousand eighteen list, so, um, again, this is a living document, but I'm sure mistakes get made, but so that, but that would just be making sure it's back on the list as A one road. Spindrift Lane, going down to, again, is, uh, missing from the two thousand eighteen list, but it was accepted in nineteen eighty as a, uh, town road, so it needs to be added to the list. And then Walnut Tree Lane, um, that's on your special cases list. That's a subdivision road, I believe, as well, right, Michael? And so that, that's another one that never, you've never got formally accepted. So we'd like to add that. Um, going down to, uh, A three town roads. Old Road, there's a section from the Laurel to Granite Road, that should be listed as an A three non-maintained road, there's a right-of-way there, but we, it's not really a maintained road. And then South Hoopole Road, there's that small section on South Hoopole Road that's not improved. You know, the South Hoopole, the kind of dead ends, but there's a right-of-way between the dead ends, improved section of the road to Route eighty. So we should add that small section and add some A three non-maintained cover.
Yeah, can you explain that one to me?
What is it?
That, that's like piled up with brush.
Yeah.
That, that was that location, like a thousand, no, no, wild, it was a terrible accident there, which I understood that closed. Right, that used to exit onto Route eighty, it's at a point where there's blocked views each direction on a curve. So what does that mean that it's still a road?
The right-of-way is still there.
Right-of-way is still there.
There's no, no, known abandonment of the right-of-way.
So, so for whatever reason, some future board decided they were gonna continue that road and completely redesign that entire intersection and
Right.
have, have sightlines and make it safe.
Yeah, it's just not.
Your grandkids.
I don't think it's a good idea to lose track of right-of-ways we own, even if they're not, you know, improved. Kind, kind of, that's the situation there.
What is it labeled as now?
Right now it's just, um, South Hoopole Road as, in its entirety is listed as an A one town road. Um, and most of it's, except for a small section, is maintained as such, so we're just proposing.
So it's almost like we're downclassifying it.
A portion.
It's a right-of-way, it's not a road.
Not approved as a road in that section.
Just a little stub there that's closed off, I mean, it's physically closed off right now, nobody can go.
Right, it's not, it's not an improved section of roadway to drive on, but it is a right-of-way.
That's the town wants to maintain and we're recognizing it formally by this action.
Yeah, that fact that we still, you know, have that right-of-way, it's just not approved at this time.
Good, thanks.
All right, and then I'll go down the list, uh, remove, um, going back up to the.
There was, Ben's Knoll, yeah, on the second page.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Benton's Knoll is a private roadway that was approved, um, based on, um, a subdivision approval, uh, it's not intended to be a town road, but it does exist, there's homes that live on it, so it should be added to our list. As a private road. Yeah, but will not receive, you know, maintenance or plowing or anything.
Before you go on, is there, is there a sense that we want to take these issues as the ads?
Yeah, I don't have any issues with, with this group.
So, um, is there a motion to approve the recommendation from engineering related to Apple Tree Lane, Carriage Hill Drive, Duck Hole Road, Greenwood Lane, Lake Drive, Spindrift, Spindrift Lane, Walnut Tree Lane, Old Road, uh, a portion of South Hoopole Road, and Benton's Knoll?
Make that motion.
I'll second. Any further comments or questions? Try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so. So we added, now we're talking about removing a few roads, um, Blue Hills Drive Extension. Um, it currently exists as part of Blue Hills Drive, um, so there doesn't need to be an extension identified, uh, as a separate roadway. Um, Church Road, as we discussed earlier, Church Road is, is now that section between Long Hill and County Road and is no longer in the location where Ledge Hill Road is identified now, so that would be a removal of Church Road from the location of where Ledge Hill Road is now. Um, Circle Beach Road, uh, is on our list, however, we don't have any residents on Circle Beach Road, Circle Beach Road exists in Madison only, and then it turns into Neck Road and Guilford. So we'd like to remove Circle Beach Road from the list and just recognize that we already have Neck Road covering that section of roadway.
And those houses all use Neck Road as their address, right?
Mm-hmm. Uh, Farmer's Wharf Road, uh, which is the small section of Whitfield Street where the bridge is and into the marina, I believe, right?
Yeah, just south of, uh, Slough Street.
Is really can, you know, identified as Whitfield Street nowadays, so we recommend removing Farmer's Wharf Road, because there's no, it's one and the same as Whitfield Street in that location. Um, Hope Hill Road, um, I believe that related to the development, which is off of Apple Tree.
Yep.
Um, was originally gonna be named Hope Hill Road, but it currently exists as Rocky Brook Lane, which is one of the little cul-de-sacs off of Apple Tree. So, um, there is no road, Hope Hill, it's now known as Rocky, Rocky Brook Lane. Um, Cow Road currently exists as Church Road, so going back to that section between Long Hill and County Road, that was once called How Road, now known as Church Road, so we'd like to remove How Road. Um, Lake Lane number two currently exists as Flat Iron Road. New Whitfield Street currently exists as part of Whitfield Street, um, so if you recall, old, old Whitfield Street was the original alignment of Whitfield Street until, with an Accra crossing, I believe, until they built the bridge to cross the railroad tracks, which is now, um, Whitfield Street, but they called it New Whitfield Street, so, um, we'd like to clean it up and just call it Whitfield Street. Um, Old Nut Plains Road, it's currently, so there's a small section of Nut Plains, um, just past half mile, between half mile and Goose Lane, where the road kind of goes off and, um, there's some driveways off of it, it's all part of the right-of-way of Nut Plains Road, all those addresses are Nut Plains Road. It was the old alignment in Nut Plains Road and they got straightened out, but the access for some reason was kept off of the old section, uh, so we'd just like to clean it up as just Nut Plains Road. Quarry Road currently exists as Granite Road. Um, let's see, and then getting down to the A two town roads. We have, uh, Duck Hole Road listed on the A two roads, but the entire road is currently an A one town road, so we'd like to remove it from the A two roads list, because it is on the A one list. Um, Dunk, Dunk Rock Road, uh, section of, west of the last residence changed to an A three road, so it really shouldn't be an A two road, it's either, um, an A one road or should be considered part of an A three road, but none of it exists as an A two road. Correct. Uh, Hoopole Road, um, it was all, all accepted as an A one road in nineteen sixty-one, so it should not show up on the A two road list. Neck Road, uh, it, it's not an A two road any longer in terms of its status, it was accepted. Uh, it it's not an A two road any longer in terms of its status. It was accepted as an A one road in two thousand eight. Norton Town Road was accepted as an A one road in the nineteen sixty-one list. So it's an improved road. It should be identified as an A two road on our list. Potunk Road, same thing. It was upgraded to an A one road in two thousand, so it should no longer appear on the A two road list. Shore Drive was accepted as an A one road in nineteen sixty-one. Um, and Thorn Hill Road uh, was accepted as an A one road in nineteen seventy-nine, so it should no longer appear on the A two road list. Going down to the A three roads, Beach Avenue currently exists as Dock Lane. What is Dock Lane said?
Uh, dirt road behind the old stone house.
With the paved parking lot essentially.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We have right of way through that parking lot.
Right.
So it's part of the parking lot essentially.
Hoopole Road.
What what are we gonna do with that if it goes to a park?
So the the section, the right of way section of the parking lot is is plowed by the town and then all of the adjacent parking spaces is plowed by the private owner since that's on out of our private. It's out of our right of way.
So Dock Lane is uh, A one road?
Correct.
So Beach Avenue is a redundant name for what is currently known as Dock Lane as an A one road.
We're not changing what we're doing. We're just changing it.
Just removing it from the list as an as an A three road. Um, Hoopole Road, same thing. Um, we're removing um, it from the A three town roads list since it was accepted in nineteen sixty-one as an A one road. North River, um, again, it was accepted as an A one road in nineteen sixty-one, so it should be on the A three list. And Three Corners Road was accepted as an A one road in nineteen eighty, so it should no longer be on the A three road list. And then um, under Sea Abandoned, we're suggesting Old New England Road be removed from the Sea Abandoned list because it was accepted as an A one road on in two thousand eight. And Crooked Hill Road be removed. Entire road is currently either an A one or an A two. So it should no longer be listed as abandoned.
See the issues with that?
I see.
The the word Stroud Road appeared in a couple of places. You didn't mention that as you were running through it. It was in the same color designation here. It's orange.
That's uh, we were doing the removes. Um, I haven't gotten to the class changes because those may need town meeting as far as I understand it and Peter weigh in on those.
Well, so like under A two town road, you have Stroud Road. It says remove accepted A one. Am I seeing that right? Remove exists as a private drive, not maintained by council. That's a different category.
Not sure what.
I'm looking at the A two town roads, dirt unimproved. And you went through, you went right from Sure Drive to Thorn Hill. You skipped over Stroud Road.
I'm not sure what list you're looking at.
It's page ten of the um.
Oh, you're looking at the other. You're looking at that list. That's this list is is like the entire list. Yeah, we're looking at just the summary of changes. Sorry.
Summary changes. Gotcha. Okay, that's actually simpler. Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a motion to accept those recommendations? Sure, I'll second. Sure. Are there any questions?
Is there any possibility that any of these um, changes that we're making happening or?
Um, well, I know like Beer House Hill Road and Footbridge Road, that that, you know, renaming it was a lot of work. Um, and it seemed like it was more entrenched in the Footbridge Road. In terms of its historic um, relevance. Um, these, what we just went through with the removals were really kind of cleaning up a list that never got properly corrected over time with some of the previous actions that the board took or just didn't make sense with what.
Yeah, it's not like most of them were accepted as ones or twos or threes.
But they just never got removed from like like some got paved now, so they they should no longer be dirt or unimproved.
List to another.
Yeah, yeah. And then the class changes, I think, is something that I think Peter's gonna have to weigh in.
We've got a motion on the table. It was just a question. So uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, Justin.
That's okay.
Sandy's not gonna know where to go. Now who notifies GPS about all this?
Um, well, so we'll make sure our roads are updated in the GIS if they aren't already, which a lot of them are. And then we also update the um, mail a map gets updated annually. They send us any notifications. We also have to report any changes to our road list to the state uh, in terms of.
Google picks it up somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
In their little car.
Yeah. Um, and then the class changes, I think is probably best for another date, you know, and I think we need some serious weigh in on from Peter in terms of, I believe, class changes may require a town meeting. But we just wanted to provide you kind of with this information and I did hand out this map just to kind of we it's and I think we could we could also do this if we were to continue with this process and try and tackle it. Class changes, we can we can do it utilizing our GIS with which has all our classifications mapped out and it helps put things I in my mind, it helps me see things paid as to where these are and what they are. But we wanted to just show you a couple of like this neighborhood I passed out is basically Leets Island. And it's kind of odd because you have roads in this clearly marked private area. Uh, I have residents who from the neighborhood who walk down there and get yelled at because they don't live there. It's that it's private. You're not supposed to walk here, yet we're doing plowing and other things in this neighborhood. Um, but you can see from the map, there are also roads that are classified all different ways, which doesn't make any sense. Um, and that's where really diving into the nineteen sixty-one classification of roads is something we may want to consider. But it's it's that it's it's gonna open up a little bit of Pandora's box. Um, because you have, you know, in my mind, a neighborhood like Leets Island, which is clearly identified as private, residence only, you know, keep out, et cetera. I never drove down there until I was town engineered. I lived here for many years, so. Thinking it was private and then to find out that we plowed the whole area was just mind blowing. But then to dig in even deeper and see we have like, we have roads classified down there as, you know, Great Harbor Road is is classified as an A three road. Why? Like, you know, we have um, B one minimum maintenance roads down there. We have one A one road, I believe, right?
Uh, no, that's that's just unknown.
That's unknown. Hickory Lane is unknown. We don't know what that is. It was never classified.
And all of the green ones.
Then the green ones are all B two privates. So we have B one privates. Um, we have B two pri- B two privates and then we have an A three. And really, they all should be be too private in my mind because um, you know, they're clearly marked as private roads and they existed before, um, you know, nineteen sixty-one. So um, just a sampling of what we're trying to do with the rest of what we're proposing for changes on the list and the big list too. Um, because it just, you know, we have other neighborhoods and, you know, we have a Indian Cove is an association neighborhood. They clearly pave their own roads, maintain their own roads, but we plow them. There's clearly signs that it's private. Like, so what, you know, why are we plowing it when it's recognized as private? Um, then we have associations like Mulberry Point where their private roads are mixed in with some of our town roads. They have or like authority over them. They recognize them as private. There's documentation of them being private, but yet we plow them, you know. So there's various degrees of association type areas and what they're demarcated as to the public and how we treat them as a town and providing services to them. So it's really, and then we have these small little driveways that for somehow like Cheryl Road off of Lake Drive, it's a driveway over properties and it's an A one road. Like, how is that even possible, you know? Um, then we have some other private roads um, that are hardly able to even get down shared driveway situation too, but they're identified as B one minimum maintenance. So it's a lot. It's gonna be a lot. Um, and I think it's, you know, and I I think based on my understanding of what happened in nineteen sixty-one is that any of those reclassifications where we're actually gonna say we're reclassifying and we're changing what we're doing for your road and updating our definition of classifications too to be modern because they're old, talking about oiling roads and things like that. Um, I think probably needs to go not only to this board through but through town meeting. So we just wanted to kind of see what your temperature is on this and whether it's something we should continue to pursue um, in terms of, you know, taking taking it all on to really clean up the list from, oh, you know, almost sixty years ago.
I I think we could probably take that up at a later point. Um.
Well, I think we did a lot today that I think cleaning up is uh, is good and necessary. I mean, there's a lot of questions. You might as well start cleaning them up. It's sixty years.
Right. And and also I want to add too, I do intend to do some uh, upgrading of our ordinance, road ordinance as well and looking to do a separate driveway ordinance, which is somewhat associated with, you know, the classification of roads and how.
Is there any way, I know we've done some updating of the programs and stuff like that. It sounds all south. Is there any way that be almost automatic there when we have our approved, but they are classified properly and that's that part of the upgrade going on. Done also?
Well, the list has always been maintained by the engineering department. Um, but it's a, you know, how many hands have been on it over sixty years? So I think the good thing is is if is the fact that the original list from nineteen sixty-one is filed in the land records, you know? So I think if we go through this effort, we can we can we can finalize the list and file it in the land records as to as the state. And going forward, you're not gonna have new B one or B two roads. You're only gonna have new private roads or new town roads because of the, you know, because of zoning and and subdivision regulations. So that's how that's gonna happen. It's it's the old roads that um, with which ended up being either B one or B two um, or private are are kind of a conundrum, I think, from the beginning and even now.
Well, listen, uh, tremendous amount of work has gone into this. Uh, I greatly appreciate it. So it's an effort that should have been done some time prior to this, but at least at least it's being done.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you.
Very much. Item six, Park and Recreation Director, Dan Geary, six dot one.
Please first?
Uh, no, it's six.
Oh, that was six A, six A. Gotcha.
Six dot one, discuss and take possible action on additional sidewalk work at Lake Oneipod, but it counts on call contact.
Good morning. Mike certainly should be smart and sweet for that. That was a lot. Um, yeah, so we're, uh, the board had previously approved um, through their town of Guilford bid number for cement work um, on sidewalks for twenty-two thousand dollars. And there's an additional work that needs to be done to add ADA parking lot, parking two handicap parking spaces, line striping, installation of ADA signage um, for the two parking spaces and installation of two concrete little stops. So it's an additional seventy-eight hundred dollars. We feel that it's best to use the same vendor that we're using right now. And we're hoping that we can get this approval today. We can get the work done before the Memorial Weekend, which would be great. Yeah.
Let them know you thought it was gonna happen.
Not yet. They know I'm here for. It's all along. It's a it's across the street where the red barn is um, and and handicap spaces will be there in that lot. And then it's coming across the street, ADA concrete work and and along the beachfront area there on the road too. For access for our our trucks have a hard time getting in there without um, the the improvement of the concrete sidewalks to to dump sand and everything too. So this is gonna be helpful for all of that.
So it's gonna be a sidewalk on the beach side?
Mm-hmm, to get access, ADA access to the beach.
Okay, yeah. Can you give further? Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, yeah, I'll I'll second it. I have a I have a question. So I'm just sort of visualizing. Because there's a fence. There's a fence on.
We're changing the fences. We're improving that. So those, you already approved us um, reinstalling fences.
Okay.
So they're dealing with the sidewalk issue first.
And so the fence is because right now it doesn't feel like it would be ADA.
It's it's tight and it's it's slow access, but we but we need to have ADA access there.
And I noticed a lot of places have like on sandy surfaces, like a sort of a corrugated mat or something that goes down. Is that part of this or is that something different?
Different.
Not necessarily.
No, this is just basically getting across the street and onto that side of the street.
So making steps to make this more compliant.
Exactly. And the ADA, I I don't know that Lake Hugh has ever had that mat, same as Jacobs. I'm not certain about that.
I don't think so.
But it may be something that we should consider as a.
Just curious. It seems like it's in the neighborhood of what you're proposing.
I agree, but I I'd have to talk to the office if they've ever had one. I'm not sure certain about that.
Yeah, that'll recall. Alright, so is there a motion to approve?
We already have.
Second, good, second. Uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Six dot two, consider take possible action on installation of new countertops in the community center bathroom.
Yeah, so this is a fiscal twenty-four capital improvement project that had been approved. Um, it's a forty thousand dollar capital improvement project. Um, and this is the countertop part of it. Um, the rest of the work that would equal out that forty thousand will be, you know, all the other additional electric will all be done quoted separately. So this is the most extensive part of the project. We got three quotes and the lowest one is Route eighty lumber millwork and I would, we request the board acceptance approval for the lowest bidder.
Got it. Is there a motion? How move? Second, I'll second. Uh, comments or questions? This is actually something that I think was originally on the capital plan about three years ago. And we pushed it, right?
I didn't know that uh, all of the electric expenses were gonna be in there. They're kind of standard now.
Hands free.
Yes. Okay, anything further? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
I also wanted to just add that the twenty, the seventy-eight hundred additional for Lake Hugh and the twenty-two thousand are all coming out of program.
Let let me say this about the electric thing. Like, there's time to time you go into some of these bathrooms. The water's literally running and this would prevent that, right? You'd have a lighter high that turns the water on. It's also a little more sanitary, not touching stuff.
Exactly.
I think it's, I think it's useful.
Yeah, there was a time when they were problematic, but now they're just standard.
I think they're on it about, yeah.
I agree.
Thanks, Ben.
Sweet.
Sweet.
Thank you.
As promised.
That's right. She delivers. Uh, item six A. After waiting patiently.
Actually, I definitely, I found that presentation very interesting, the Janice, with the roads. Because I visualize them and learn a little bit of history on them.
I think the interdepartmental cooperation is always excellent here. But, you know, there's always some more information.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I thought that was very interesting.
Just carried over, you know, took from nineteen sixty to now. That's doing something, explaining.
Nervous.
The glacial pace of government a little bit. Good morning, Sal.
Good morning.
What do you got? What do you got for us?
So back in the earlier part of this year, the board's department authorized us a hundred and nine thousand one hundred and fifteen thousand eighty-eight cents to outfit six new police vehicles. First of all, I'd like to publicly acknowledge kind of purpose. We'll we'll have new roles to the police department. His new role is to oversee this and it's it's very complicated outfitting these vehicles, all the different components. It's a moving target. The prices aren't always set in stone because things change as we go along. Uh, the outfit of those six vehicles is going very, very well. I think we're I think we're cautiously optimistic that we would have been able to do the chief's car as well with some, uh, decommissioning of a couple of vehicles, maybe saving a little extra money. But it looks like we're gonna be right on target to do six vehicles only with the money that was allocated. Uh, so we are respectfully requesting sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-one thousand forty cents to outfit the chief's vehicle, which has been quoted by Soli's Garage.
Great. Uh, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, just the funding is coming from your just operating budget this year or where?
No, we had, we had appropriated our funding, yes.
Oh.
Wanted to get them while we could.
So the, the original hundred and nine was our funding, now this is an additional sixteen?
Yep.
Perfect.
Well, will it ever? Well, we're probably gonna keep, stay with the exports, right? Cause that's what they're producing at this.
Yeah, until they become obsolete, like the Ford LTDs, we use those forever and ever and ever.
Well, that's where I was going. We did get to a, a little bit of a point with the LTDs where we were able to, use some of the existing equipment when we got new ones and that type of thing. Cause I bet you it's not really going to evolve like that, especially with the hybrid. It just seems like something changes so fast now. You know, it's almost like they build it into the manufacturing changes so that you have to.
Land obsolescence, I can call it.
I, I think that LTD was special circumstance. That was like a fully capitalized production that they just were gonna milk. They probably were only selling to municipal purposes down the stretch. And they just, you know, they kept that card twenty years without any changes.
Well, I know, I just tried to, you know, and it's a possible prediction of whether Explorer was going that direction. Now, I was unpleasantly surprised in reports how, how much poorer the lifespan of an Explorer is compared to an LTD. But you combine that with the, the constant changing in the inch, I mean, now it's hybrid, but it's not that far away. It's gotta be, no. Interesting. What we can do about, we should just calculate it in going forward that way now. Reminds me of the trucks when we upgraded trucks above the work. Wasn't the trucks, it was all the maintenance that, you know, changed.
Yeah.
I didn't say it doubled the cost of the trucks, but it was a solid fifty percent more just to buy a program to repair the thing. And how they stop when they aren't maintained.
Okay, got a motion and a second? Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no, thank you, have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care, have a great day.
Item seven, consider to take possible action, noise, period, application for fireworks event taking place July thirteenth at the Guilford Fairgrounds, is there a motion?
Make the motion.
A second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Uh, item eight, discuss and take possible action to set a public hearing for June seventeen, twenty twenty-four, uh, eight thirty AM Town Hall via Zoom programs to be considered for the twenty twenty-four Neighborhood Assistance Act Program. Is there a motion? Move, second?
Second.
I think you may recall, this is, uh, we, we have to actually, uh, author, not authorize, but, uh, agree or approve the applications that are coming from Guilford for the Neighborhood Assistance Act grant funding.
Do we publicize this to organizations?
Someone else takes care of it. Um, although we haven't posted. All right, let me try your minds, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, item nine.
Have a good day.
So that's just gonna precede our regular meetings.
Yep. Uh, item nine, appointments and resignations. All right, nine dot one, act on a recommendation to appoint Christie Huntley as an alternate to the Youth and Family Services Board to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, let me try your minds, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, nine dot two, act on a reappointment of Charles Havert, to the South Central Connecticut Regional Wanted District Representative Policy Board for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Would you like to make, anyone like to make that?
I'd love to make that motion.
Second?
Your honor.
Second?
I, yeah, second then.
I'll second the second. Yeah, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
You can vote for yourself, you know.
Can I quote from the letter here?
Yes.
Mr. Havert's historical knowledge and experience make him an extremely valuable member. Thank you.
I like the extremely, but I don't like the historical. Well, thank you.
Now you can represent us.
Important times, what I'm sorry right now.
Yeah.
You want all the play?
Yeah.
All right, uh, nine dot three, act on a resignation received from Christie Faulk, uh, from Guilford, uh, board. Sony Board of Appeals, um, is there, is there a motion?
Yeah, with regret.
With regret and appreciation. Is there a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Item ten, request for use of town property, uh, ten dot one, uh, is act on a request to use the green for an art installation associated with the community, nursery, school, little affairs, folks. Uh, is there a motion?
So.
Uh, second?
Second.
Read between the lines on that one. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Ten dot two, act on a request from the Highland House Museum, the place to sign on the green advertising its antique show taking place June one to seven, one to two, twenty-four, sign placement five twenty to six two. Uh, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, I'm just looking at, as I understand it, the, uh, the antique show is at their facility, not on the green.
Yes.
Yeah. It's just the sign.
All right, uh, so we have a motion and a second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, ten dot three, act on a request from A W Cox Howler Music Ensemble to use the green June eighth, twenty twenty-four, rain date, uh, June ninth, uh, for its steel pan music ensemble performance. Just wanna make sure that this is a, a nonprofit.
I have to think, I wonder if that's an outside work organization or if it's just.
It's, it's a school, it's, it's a school, it's the school. Yeah, it's a, it's a group within the school.
Great.
Do we know who Russ Finer is in North Bradford?
I believe it might be the teacher Karen spoke with. So that's probably the teach.
Okay, um, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
In a second.
With those clarifications, yeah.
Something kind of unusual.
Twenty students, uh, performing. All right, um, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, community reports, uh, I don't think we have any, um. Is there one's up?
No, I'm just wondering what, I don't see the date, I see May fourteenth, actually, but that, that must be the date.
Date of, I think it says June eighth, rain date.
Okay, of course, of course, okay, thank you.
Number at ten AM to twelve thirty, I gotta put that on calendar. That could be filmed, I'll go listen to. Correspondence? The, nothing? Um, old business, we'll put this on here, just the, the discussion on proposed ordinance ban on cannabis establishments and use of town property related public hearing upcoming on June third. Um, any comments or questions on that at this point?
Just wondering how we got to this particular proposal.
Um, it was, uh, with a series of discussions from Pete about, uh, should we try to extend it even one more time? He thinks that we're at a point where we have to make a decision on it, uh, one way or the other. Now, we don't necessarily have to approve the ordinance that way.
Right.
Because if that's done, um, have a motion come out of the, out of that meeting that says we're gonna extend them more times again.
Got it, got it. So one was interested in discussing the, um, the non-retail businesses.
Right.
That, that would be the time to do it.
That would be excellent.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I think this, I, I support this simply because of my past comments about.
Yeah.
And that could always be done.
And we have to put something on the table for people to discuss, like Susan explained. The last hearings, I was disappointed by the turnout. And, you know, now we, we've eliminated, uh, one of the points of those past public hearings where they were asked, well, what are we proposing? Here it is.
Yep.
It's just interesting, so there's some suggestion on social media that the board of selectmen is in favor of banning. And that's not really, this is a discussion.
Right.
It's a discussion starter.
Yep. Okay, uh, new business, um, discussion on the day, mental health resource magnets. You've seen this, uh, I, I think this is a wonderful idea, but I'm troubled by the use of that doc, that particular document to, uh, put information out into the community. And what, uh, what would become appropriate and what is not appropriate to use, uh, in the tax bills.
I'm not sure I understand.
Wait, what is this?
This, oh, you don't have it?
No.
All we have is a, just a notice, discussion on day.
Ah, okay, I'm sorry. You guys should have had this, let me read it to you. This is from Leah Foster over at Youth and Family. Uh, they recently learned that some coalitions put out informational, informational mental health and addiction resources on magnets and send them out with, uh, tax bills in July, uh, uh, or January. We don't send out a tax bill in January. Uh, Leah spoke to Debbie in the tax office and she was on board, but said, uh, we would need to run this idea by the board of selectmen and share, uh, and every say third party who manages the taxes, we manage the sending out the bills. Uh, that's, we have a, we have a vendor that sends out the tax bills. Um, and they would like to know if we would consider including these magnets. Uh, they don't have a mock-up of it yet, um, but certainly one could be, uh, provided in relatively short order. So, um, they were thinking of featuring, uh, I think there's some of the, uh, hot, you know, the hotlines, uh, nine eight eight, one one, uh, two one one, uh, as well as some opioid addiction recovery resources. Is, so the question I have is, is this something we would consider doing with a tax bill? And.
Yeah, I, I gotta tell you, other tax bills I've gotten have had, whether they be magnets or informational things about emergency numbers. I would have to see, to your point, I would have to see the mock-up because, I would probably not be as enthusiastic if it was an advertisement for a particular organization as opposed to a general, uh, informational piece, you know, magnet to put on your refrigerator or whatever. Maybe that's old school, but.
Describing the services that we provide.
Well, not, not even that, just the, the emergency numbers maybe. I mean, it's, uh, I, I know other tax bill I get have the, please fire everything in it. It's all in one place and it isn't, you know, somewhat handy and we do get it in that.
It's a magnet? I mean, I would think if we, if we do decide that we would like the idea of sending something in public interest out in the tax bill, I'm not sure. I don't have any reason to think we wouldn't choose this, but maybe there'd be something else we choose instead, I mean, I don't know. No cost, there must be additional mailing costs.
Yeah, uh, some of the details, we'll, we'll need to get those details, so.
Yeah, it just, I mean, I don't wanna second guess their logic, but, um, sort of a mass mailing that goes to everybody in town, it seems kind of wasteful.
Yeah.
To get that information out there, I don't know.
All right, let's have them, allow them, uh, get us a mock-up, uh, and particularly what services they are going to be referring folks to in, in any associated car.
Yeah, I'm intrigued that, that, I just don't remember seeing those before.
We've done, I, I don't recall, uh, Guilford, Texas, Charlie's talking about.
No, I've got it.
In renovation.
Another, okay, okay, I got you. And I can, I can see that, I mean, I could see somehow there was a poison control.
It's a public service thing.
Yeah, public service, yeah, please fire the ambulance. Contesting what, what services the municipality was providing.
Yeah.
That makes some sense. Uh, my, my only concern on something this narrow would be then the next group is gonna say, well, we want one. Before you know it, we've got five. I hate slippery slope bargains, I hate them. I'm just making one.
It's okay, you're entitled. All right, so we'll get further information.
Was it assumed that the town would pay for this?
I have no idea. It was, wasn't clear. They may have access to resources, some grant funds, uh, from Youth and Family Services along those sides. Um, and we'll check. Um, okay, uh, public forum.
Yeah, waiting patiently.
Yeah, I had to go. Deb Denise's eighteen Sterling Road. Um, so my, my hope, I guess, it says discussion on proposed ordinance ban on cannabis establishments and use on town property with related public hearing upcoming on June third. So I know you're not supposed to answer questions, so I guess my first question is, when is that discussion is gonna happen before June third?
No, it's gonna happen June third, that's what it's.
Oh, okay, so it's all one, it's all one piece, okay. And then is there any way that, I know when you had your last meeting, there was a lot that I didn't know that I learned that night, like, um, it doesn't just include the dispensaries, it includes so much more than dispensaries. Is there any way that, uh, um, someone from the public can go on our Guilford website and maybe see, like, really clear, bullet pointed, or simply what that all includes so that they could come prepared for the discussion maybe ahead of time, um, and.
That's a good point, we, we had a presentation.
I'm sure we did.
We, we had a.
Yeah.
Yeah, by, yeah, shipment and good one, which has all the options, all the.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll put that on.
Yeah, because it, it really does confuse me if I don't see it and have it in front of me. I didn't take notes that night.
Yeah, they explain what the.
I really don't remember, so it, I think that would be just so helpful to the citizens in town and the community.
Good idea.
I think that an educated community, it, coming and being prepared to speak that night would be your best, um, audience.
It, it makes for a better discussion.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I, I don't know if this is into this discussion or not, but they are the board of it and, and the police and fire.
Uh, yes, they will all be there.
I missed, I missed their info.
Uh, that would be great, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Although, yeah, Deb, to your point, you know, I think there, there are a lot of folks don't know how many different categories of.
No idea, until I came to that last one, I had no idea. And like, you know, they said it wasn't well attended, so, you know, hope, I'm, you know, hoping that, you know, that this one would be more well attended and then, um, you can actually have people that can ask appropriate questions.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Deb, thanks for your patience.
Anybody online?
Uh, anybody online? But I just want, uh, everyone to welcome Annabelle Beatty. Uh, that name should sound familiar to you.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, I remember when, uh, Annabelle was sent, uh, by her dad to come pick up his packets for the, uh, Florida Finance Meeting here at Town Hall and I got to see her smiling face. But she is now, uh, a senior at the high school. Uh, and so this is part of her project, right, Annabelle? This is part, part of a senior project, uh, where she is, uh, attending and participating in meetings. Um, so as, as part of her thing, you wanna just talk a little bit about that, Annabelle?
Yeah, so in order to graduate, I have to do like forty hours of a service project. So I decided to shadow Slechtman Hoey and learn more about like the meetings and processes behind like events and committees and obviously like what we're talking about today with like roads and stuff like that. So just how politics, like kind of, like the, like the background behind the politics in Guilford, which is really fascinating to me, so thank you, by the way, for this opportunity.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna invite her to a lot of very boring meetings. And she's gonna be attending other meetings as well, not just for the selectmen and, uh, active B C R, so.
But now, did I see that we hired, uh, economic development director?
We did, we did. It was, uh, John Turudis, uh, Guilford resident, who's got, uh, extensive background uh, in the healthcare field, in, uh, community development work in, uh, within. John is also a part-time, um, uh, dock master, uh, over at the marina. Uh, so he's thrilled to be on board, he'll be on board, uh, early, early June, second week of June perhaps, so.
I know that we're not, uh, doing it jointly with Madison.
No, we're not. No, we're not, they backed out of it.
Yeah, I think that, you know, maybe you could come to a meeting and.
Hey, Jesus.
Yes.
Well, as, as you recall, we used to have Sherry come to one, one meeting a month and give an update. John may be looking to us to give him an update for the first time, but, uh.
Well, yeah, I don't necessarily mean the first time through or anything, but, uh, I, yeah, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah. All right, um, okay, uh, public forum. Anyone wishing to address public forum? If not, I will, uh, entertain a motion, uh, to, uh, go into executive session, uh, for, uh, discussion and possible action on appeals from residents of elderly tax relief program. Um, is there a motion to do so? And a second?
Second.
Uh, all right, um, Annabelle, I'm going to have to ask you to take your leave, um, and, uh, we'll be in touch soon, right? Okay, we. Uh, is there a motion to come out of executive session? And a second? Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, in executive session, there were no motions made, uh, no actions taken, uh, but as a result of, uh, discussions, uh, is there a motion to approve, uh, the, uh, eight, um, the eight appeals, uh, that, uh, we felt favorable? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Uh, any comments, questions? There are no, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, uh, seeing that we have nothing else before, so I'll entertain a motion to. Motion, a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor? Aye, that motion carries, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.